Like, probably not, actually. Like, when we're at post. I think my phone in the car. I did all survived. No, is it?
So then, let's.
Okay. You can do whatever on Monday, then you can do girls.
Yes.
Easiest way, because then we can just. You send me the. Okay. I agree. Yeah. Your song was amazing at the concert. Like, we go to Florida right after rollouts. He flies home. You will be ready for vacation.
Our period is around.
That'll be nice.
Either.
On vacation. Yeah. So we'll be. I need to get to my house.
Awesome.
Romeo and I used to be the best. That's what I'm thinking of. Well, I'm number one of those three. Are they all still there? Did you guys, do you still have them?
What?
The chairs.
Till 5:30.
And then it goes for his brother.
I put them on the staff.
Thank you. Note.
On that note, good evening. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Farmington School Board on March 14th at 5:30 PM. Please rise and for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to our mother, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We didn't have any public comment tonight, so it was, you know, fun to hear all the chatting and everyone kind of getting settled in, and I knew that was going to be startling. But anyway, so glad, glad everyone can join us here this evening. First order of business is approval of the agenda. Agenda is posted online. I believe all board members had, have had a chance to review. Any additions to the agenda? If not, could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. I can't.
Motion by Saucer, second by Doyle. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Which brings us to our next item, good news and superintendent update. Superintendent Berg.
Thank you Chair Christensen, members of the board and members of the community. Lot of stuff. It was even just two weeks ago, we have a lot of stuff, so this is pretty exciting. So just a quick follow up to the community expo, so a number of us had a chance to attend at different times. It was kind of nice to have, again, something that was a little bit pre-pandemic come back. I know that community, I was excited, you know, not exactly sure how things were going to go, depending, you know, how many people would show up and things like that, and they were a little worried right away, because it started kind of slow, but it built up. But in the end, they ended up having 78 booths, and I'm not sure exactly how they got this number, but it's very specific. 708 people attended, so good start, and they're going to look at next year, they're going to solicit some feedback, because typically, I believe it's in February, January, and they got moved back. So they're going to see, do we leave it a later time to move back? But it was a good starting point for that. The Farmington Athena Award winner was named Samantha Moley. So for those of you that aren't familiar, the St. Paul area Athena Awards Program honors outstanding female high school senior athletes from the St. Paul and suburban public and independent high schools for their athletic achievements. So we fall underneath the St. Paul. I'm not quite sure why, but we always have. And the award is based on excellent individual sports or for participation in accomplishments in team sports. So congratulations to Sam on that, and they do an awesome job with the banquet for that. So that's a really cool thing. We had some teams that got some academic awards, but I'm going to leave it to our two student school members to cover that. We also had some teams that competed at state meets, and those guys are going to cover that as well. So now there's some tension building about what that is, so it'll be very exciting. People want to stay tuned. Boys basketball team, they competed, they are going to compete in the section final coming up here, and they're going to talk a little bit more about when and where that is as well. And I'm assuming that board member Coletta might give us an update on the robotics competition that was in Duluth. So they ran into a few hiccups, but they overcame a lot of things and stuff, so I'll leave that one for you. Some really cool news over the weekend, our speech team competed up at Eagan, and we had one of our, our speech people qualify for the national meet in drama. So congratulations to Ashlyn Cox. So she gets to compete in a few things running up to that, but I know that Ms. Beckman was very, very, very excited. Ms. Beckman and Ms. Baumann were very excited for, for Ashlyn and that. Big deal, big deal. So the state BPA, and this is right hot off the presses too, as I was putting this all together, we just got the information on our state BPA contestants, and if you remember, I believe I put it in front of us, we had a number of kids qualify for the state meet, I mean, it was a significant number, it was like 15 to 20 kids, and we have a lot of kids that qualified for nationals in Nashville. So Elsa Edu, she qualified in three different things, fundamentals of web design, digital communications and design, and information technology concepts. Michael Newman qualified in C++ programming and advanced accounting. Lorenzo Nord qualified in payroll accounting and advanced accounting. Mackenzie Roach qualified in computer security and banking and finance. Abigail Rottenbaum qualified in fundamentals of word processing. Ella Roether qualified in graphic design promotion and fundamentals of web design. Hunter Stone qualified in personal finance management and fundamental accounting, and Haley R. qualified in business meeting management and personal finance management. So quite a number of kids that got through that state competition and qualified for nationals, pretty cool thing. The Burnsville-Lakeville-Farmington Blazing Cats, so our adapted CI hockey team, qualified for the state tournament that's coming up this weekend, so they begin competition on Friday at Bloomington-Jefferson High School. And I know I updated two weeks ago on this, but the North Trail third grade team was in that reading competition, I said they made the Sweet 16, they have made the Elite Eight. And not only did they make the Elite Eight, they moved from seventh place to sixth place. So I sent, I wasn't able to get over there on Friday, and it got pretty busy today, so I sent them a video message, trying to pump them up for the next two weeks and get to that Final Four with March Madness going on. Tonight is the Jubilee, the band Jubilee concert at FHS, so that begins at 7:00. So hopefully people can attend that. The FHS Choir Concert is this Thursday, they have two different concerts, I believe the first one's at 6:30 and the second one is at 8 o'clock. We were able to celebrate National School Social Work Week last week. You may not know this, but we do have one school social worker, Kate Adams, is new to our district. We've actually used some federal money to fund that position this year and next year. One of the main things that Kate helps us with is our homeless liaison, that was kind of an area that we did not have a lot of support in, and then with the pandemic, we just saw a significant rise in the number of kids and families that, so that's been kind of, but she's done way more than that, provides a significant help at our middle schools, where we do not have 360 community workers in each of those buildings, and then has worked closely with that group as well, just to provide additional assistance to families throughout. So it's been a really good addition to the district. The FHS Chill Zone is up and running, so Ms. Wagner has worked with two student leaders to transform one of the study rooms that was designed as part of the innovative design things that each building was able to do into a monitored sensory room, where students can take a break without technology as needed. So the opportunity is to provide mental health support and identify what coping tools, like playing with fidgets, yoga, coloring, et cetera, are helping learners self-regulate. In conjunction with this, Kate Adams has helped create and distribute calming kits to every classroom in FHS with quiet sensory items for in-class use. So just another way trying to provide additional mental health support in a little bit more of an organic fashion. So they're going to kind of check out, see how this goes, and then see what sort of adjustments they need to make. There was a number of science fairs that have gone in the last couple of weeks. I know some of you have judged, I had an opportunity to judge, so Aiken Road had theirs, they had over 90 participants in their science fair. Metaview had theirs, they had 31 participants. I know FES had theirs as well. Metaview also reached PBIS school-wide reward goal, so positive behavior intervention, so they set goals for that. So basically, we're looking for kids doing good things and rewarding when that happens. So they had a giant fish tank and the paw rewards they put in there, and when they filled it, they reached their goal, which they did this past week. So they had a giant popcorn party. So they were excited, so, you know, the ability to kind of reward those acts of kindness, responsibility, respect are those things that we're really trying to do and bring out more, and this is just another opportunity to do that. FES completed two other kind of things, they did a Read-a-thon as part of Read Across America, and then Jump Rope for Heart. So their Jump Rope for Heart raised about $3,000, and I shared with a couple of members earlier, but since Mr. Oscar, their PE teacher, has been there, I won't say the exact number, but it's been 20-plus years, they have raised over $137,000 as part of Jump Rope for Heart. So just another cool activity that I can remember doing Jump Rope for Heart, so it's kind of neat when you see that still going on. And then as part of their Read-a-thon, they raised about $5,000, and really with the goal to try to create outdoor reading spaces in that area out there. Two more quick things, Dodge Middle School Councilor Glee Slater is going to be honored by the 360 communities on April 14th for advocacy around domestic and sexual violence. So a passion of hers has done a lot of work around that, so pretty cool to see that she's being rewarded and recognized for that work. And then I had an opportunity and continue to work with some legislators and MSBA and a couple of other organizations around some bills. One of the ones that I've kind of been pulled into is around instructional minutes, so you may or may not remember, last year, had an opportunity to testify multiple times before the Senate Ed Finance Committee around this, been asked to do the same thing in the House, and so if you're interested, it's House File 2726. And so really trying to allow districts to have the flexibility to identify what qualifies instructional minutes, so that we can best provide programs and learning design to support the needs of each learner, and not have it being driven by simply sitting in a seat and taking attendance and stuff. So we feel pretty good about it, we'll see what happens. So that is all I have for tonight, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jason. We'll continue with the student school board update.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We'll keep that tension about the athletic results going a little while longer.
Yes.
In order of what I have, I have academic awards first. Boys hockey earned the title of Class AA Academic State Champs with a cumulative GPA of 3.81. Girls hockey won an academic gold for a cumulative GPA of 3.81, and wrestling also earned academic gold for a cumulative GPA of 3.69. I'll break that tension about the athletics now. Farmington Boys Basketball won against Lakeville South 55 to 47, and are moving on to the championships against Owatonna. That's going to be at Rochester this Friday at 6:00 PM. They have an activity bus going from the high school, so I think there will be a lot of attendance. Farmington Wrestling had their state meet. Runners up at state were Davis Perro and Cole Hanlindemeyer, and third place went to Drew Keeler. We just had finals last week, so they wrapped up last week, and I think I speak for everyone at the high school when I say that we were very excited for those to be done, have a long weekend, and then dive back into try three. With spring break coming, there's also a little bit of added anticipation to that, so we're all eager to learn until, at least until spring break. And he has a little more to talk about spring break, finals, so I'll let him go.
Well, hello, everyone. At the high school finals week went really well for a lot of us. The addition of more Tiger Connection time during that finals week is really helpful for a lot of us, because we're able to do some last minute preparation for our classes and really study for all those tests. About every winter sport has wrapped up, some even had their end of season banquets already, with the exception of the previously mentioned boys basketball, who have their section game this week that you all should go to. Boys Swim and Dive also did really well at state, having both participants make finals. Junior Derek Keane placed 12th in the 50 Free, and Senior Brandon Willsec placed 15th in the 200 IM, and fifth in the 100 Breaststroke, winning all state for his breaststroke. Boys Swim and Dive also won the section academic champ, having the highest average GPA in the 1AA section at a 3.81. Student Council has also been working hard to make the school a kinder place. Council has begun the so-called positivity grades, where we surprise and decorate a classroom to help lift the spirits of the staff and students that are in those classrooms. There are also two March Madness contests going on right now at the high school. One is called the Tournaments of Books, which involves choosing different books to go head-to-head in order to find the voted favorite. This is brought to you by the Media Center. The second contest is a typical college basketball bracket, however, it is a school-wide competition. Student Council will be giving a prize to whoever joins the Farmington group and wins. Last but not least, every Wednesday at the high school, students are able to watch a school-sponsored program formerly known as Tiger News. For the final trimester, it is now called Afternoon. Afternoon is a place where all students can make sure that they can stay up to date with the local news and events around Farmington. It is run by the video production staff and students in the high school. Thank you.
That's awesome. I'm glad you guys are settled in and providing some entertainment as well as some information. That's, that's great. The next item on our, on our agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is made up of routine business items that can be acted upon with them on motion. If any board member wishes to discuss an item, they may request that it be polled from the consent agenda, and it will be acted upon separately. Does anybody have an item they wish to discuss?
Jason, can I ask to poll the item number E, Assigning New Developments to Schools? Did I say Jason or I meant Kyle?
I think you did say Jason.
I'm sorry.
Pretty sure I did.
Jason and Kyle, can I please do that?
Sounds good to me.
All right, yes, I think that's, that's fine. So we will pull, was that item E? And we will discuss that separately and immediately following approval of the consent agenda. Are there any other items? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, stated?
Second.
Motion by Carrero, second by Saucer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And now we will move on to discuss item E. Get back up, there's a lot of gifts that were received by the Farmington High School from various sources, which is also awesome to see. Item E is Assigning New Development to Schools. It says here that the administration is recommending that learners in the new Cedar Hills housing development near area, near the area of 202nd Street and Cedar Avenue be assigned to Aiken Road Elementary and Dodge Middle School. Hannah?
Thanks. Yeah, I just, I think, Jason, if you could provide clarification, I know a lot of families assume that the school closest to them is the one that they'll automatically be assigned to, so I wondered if you could just provide some more information for the public about how, how Aiken Road was assigned in particular for.
Yeah, so one of the things that we do is, you know, trying to, and we have a number of, you know, new developments coming online, and so a little bit of trying to figure out when are they going to actually come online, when are they going to bring kids, sort of thing. So we wait till they put addresses on there and stuff like that, and we got a request on a week ago, two weeks ago, of a family moving in and looking for what district their, their child would be in. So there's a couple of things we go to, right? I mean, can we, can we put it into an elementary and middle school that are closest to that? So that's the first thing we look at. And so in that case, it would be Metaview, now not too far down the road, less than a mile, is, is Aiken Road. So then the next thing we start to look at is, what is, you know, what's the capacity of the building and how much is it being used? And then have we done anything similar with developments around that development that might be going to the same place? So that all played into kind of the decision to, to have, have that development go into Aiken Road and Dodge. So you'll see tonight, when we go through enrollment a little bit, that Aiken Road is our smallest enrollment elementary, has the most space in it, and Dodge is our smallest enrollment when it comes to our middle school. So it makes sense, if we can flow kids into that, we'd like to do that. We know that, you know, right, if they get too low and the other ones get too high, and we have to redo boundaries, that is an interesting process, to say the least, and we would prefer not to do that until we absolutely have to, either because you're, you're too low on one end or you're too full on the other end. So that, that played into part of it. And the other thing is, is it Regita or Regatta?
Regita.
Regita, I always screw up which one. So Regita, which is the 61-house development just to the south of FHS, so part of the process, when that came online, is we made a similar sort of, you know, thought through it, and we, they currently go to Aiken Road and they go to Dodge. So there's a possibility to go through there. And then if you go online, you can see our, our boundaries. Aiken Road is landlocked, right? There's not a lot of opportunity for new developments around there. All of our other ones actually have, and there has been some pieces where we've carved out for Aiken Road additional developments that will go there. So I believe there's one on the other side of Highway 3 as well, that is in Riverview typically, but we've moved it over there just to kind of prevent having to do many boundary changes. We're fortunate enough, for the most part, you know, we have a few elementaries that are pretty close to each other, so, you know, it looks a little weird driving by it, but it's pretty close. So that was the rationale behind that.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate that. That was it.
Okay. Well, because it's out of the consent agenda, I guess I need a motion to pass the Assigning New Developments into Schools.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Carrero, seconded by Simmons. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Chair Christensen, I just want to make one comment. I should wait till board remarks, but since we have in front of us, the donations, we were talking about this before, there's over $84,000 at the Booster Clubs, and that's athletics and activities, so it's not just athletics, that have donated to the school, which pays for coaches and different things, transportation, buses and stuff like that. Because I know we always say the PTP, and a lot of the same families are PTP and Booster Club, so just a good, just a nice kudos to that. I was amazed when I added up the dollar amount on that, it was, it was pretty significant.
Yeah, it's huge. Great support for the schools.
Yes.
Absolutely. It's good, always good to see. Our next item on the agenda is Reports and Communications. We'll start with Enrollment and Budget Overview with Superintendent Berg and Jane Huska.
Yeah, Ms. Huska is going to play backup, just in case I get stuck on something. I won't make her stand up here when we're going through this. So thank you Chair Christensen, members of the board, members of the community. So we thought, and we've talked about the budget and kind of enrollment a couple of different times, you know, our work sessions, and then our last meeting, we thought might be nice to kind of package it all together, so that it's in one spot. And so to kind of begin this, we want to tell the story of what's going on in the state of Minnesota, because it does reflect a little bit on what we're seeing locally as well. So MDE maybe two, three weeks ago released their student population data around, and we all knew that, you know, when the pandemic hit, that there was a decline in public school enrollment, right? You know, families made choices for all sorts of decisions. The big question was, what was going to happen basically for this year? What were we going to see? Were we going to see a bounce back in enrollment? Were we going to see a continued decline? continued decline or flat line? So this first graph, when you look at this, again, this is just state of population, right, public schools, and you can see that kind of upward trend, you know, from 16 to 2020 pandemic hits, and then, you know, it continued to drop a little bit in public school. Okay, so that was kind of the big thing people were looking at to see what would take place and what would happen. When you get more specific and you take a look at the stranding of, okay, what decisions are families making? Again, the very top one in red is homeschool, and the interesting thing, you know, for me, is when you look at that, you know, and even in our district, we saw a lot of families make that choice to have their kids stay home, and they take care of that education. So you see a big jump from 20 to 21, 10,000, and then, you know, again, a lot of people thought, well, we would see a significant number of these homeschool families come back to the public schools district, and you saw some of that, but not as significant as what we thought. Many of those families, again, found things that really worked well for them, liked the flexibility that they had, and continued to keep their kids at home with them. Private schools, I thought it was interesting, from 20 to 21, that there really was no increase. I thought there would have been a little bit of an increase there, but the big jump was from 2021 to 2022, and I think a lot of that had to do with even more unknowns, right? I mean, there was probably more unknowns going into this year than there was the previous year, even though we, you know, we're trying to figure out hybrid and all this other stuff. You know, public charter has stayed fairly consistent, you know, some families made that choice. And then, you know, when you look at the public non-charter, right, the decrease in there, and that gray area is about a 3% decrease when you look at it overall. And then I pulled this one because I thought this was really interesting too, you know. For the longest time, families have had the opportunity to choose public online schools, right? In Minnesota, in 2020, there was 26 approved online providers in the state of Minnesota. You have to go through a process to do that. It's fairly, I don't know if rigorous is the right word, more like complex and busy to go through. There's just a lot of things that your typical, typical school districts don't have to do, but to become an online provider, they say now you have to do these things. So you can see, you know, about 7,500 students at that time, 26 online providers, you know, it didn't quite double when the pandemic hit, but we saw a significant increase. But really, not that many other, you know, online providers came on, and I think part of it was the process that people had to go through. And then I think, you know, a lot of districts like ourselves started to see that families liked some of that flexibility. They liked that opportunity when they were in distance learning to be able to do that and not be in schools. Not for everybody, but families liked that option, and you can see the continued increase in there. And over those two years, it was 160% increase in students attending, and I think more dramatically is when it goes from 26 online providers to 113. That's 335% increase. Now, we are one of those. We have finally gotten through the process. We are an online provider. We're still trying to work through the information that we got to see if we can provide an online learning experience based on the information that we got, where we are with our budgets, and Chris and Lee are still working through that. But we are one of those 113 now, which does give us additional flexibility beyond just being that online provider. It kind of frees you from some of the other things that are required in terms of seat time and some of the other stuff.
How are these numbers reflected in the prior slide? Are they separate or are they included somewhere in the?
They're separate.
Okay.
Is my understanding that these are separate and pulled out different.
Thank you.
And stuff. So what is, so now let's get to specific Farmington. So we parse this out a couple of different ways, and this is where it gets wonky when you start talking about school enrollment, okay? So when you look at this, this is our elementary enrollment, and what you see, if you just look at the graph, you'll see that our elementary enrollment peaked in the 2014-2015 school year, okay? So that's where we had the most number of elementary students enrolled. Now, you're probably looking at those numbers and say, well, hey, you know, Mr. Berg, right, used to be a math person, how are you getting like .7, .78? There's decimals up there, right? And so I asked Jane the same thing. How are we getting points of students? That seems really weird. But Board Member Carrero asked at one point in time, do we get credit for partial students? Yes, that's what that is part of. So student is here for part of the year, we get credit for that. The other thing that this takes into account of are tuition kids. So there are kids that go to 917. So even though they may attend some programs in 917, we do receive some initial funding for them, and then 917 charges is back. They're in there in some sort of, you know, whole fraction number. And then credit recovery, you know, we don't have an ALC, but when our kids enter credit recovery, they do generate some additional funding as well, depending on how long they take through things. So that is all of our ADMs, so our Average Daily Membership, and then that's what we basically get funded on, okay? All those bits and pieces. So again, you can see, we had a small decline starting after 2014-2015, and then you get to the last two bars, you can see that was accelerated through the pandemic. Now, there's some things to think about here, right? So why is that happening? What is causing that? We'll talk about that in a little bit. And you can, as a district, you can overcome, if your elementary is dropping a little bit, and we'll talk about this a little bit, because they, their multiplier is a 1.0. So they get 1.0 of whatever the general formula is. Secondary learners generate 1.2. So if you have more in your secondary, you can kind of offset some of that until they get into your secondary. So now this is secondary enrollment, and you can see it follows a little bit of different pattern because it takes a while for those waves to come through, and we can see, start to see some of that. And when we get to 2019-2020, the pandemic hits, and we are also starting to see that peak that came in 2014-2015 start to creep into our middle schools. And so we have another picture that shows a little bit differently, that I'll see a little bit more clearly, but you can see, starting to see a little bit of a decline. And then when we look at, this is our enrollment, so this is all of our ADMs, this is everything put together. You can see we were pretty steady, you know, 2013-2014, right around there, you know, reached a peak at, you know, 2017-2018, right around there, and then starting to see a little bit of a decline due to the pandemic, but we know that that decline potentially could continue with what we're seeing with elementary. Now, again, the big unknown, how many people are going to move in houses, what kids they're going to bring and things like that. But we have to be, in our minds, we have to be much more conservative than we've been the last two years with our enrollment, trying to figure out, are we going to bounce back or not? I think based on what we're seeing, our trends at elementary, and when we've talked about original budget, using 100 less students is a safe conservative estimate for that as we move forward for this year. Now, this is just another way to look at it, but it's, this is different. So I got it, so this is not ADMs. Now, this is like kids in seats, and this doesn't include any tuition kids, it doesn't include early childhood, it doesn't, you know, this isn't partials. Basically, this is end-of-year enrollment. So when you take a look at this now, the red is when there's a decline from the previous year. So you can see in our elementary buildings, right, we have more red than green as we move from 2014-2015, right? That's that slow drip in loss of enrollment in the elementaries. And then you can see when we move over, we get to 2021-2022, it begins to hit our middle schools along with the pandemic at the same time, and that's put us in that weird spot of, hey, we were okay until we get to the middle schools, now where we start to not only lose the kiddo, but we lose the point two that goes with them, which makes it a little bit more difficult as you try to go through this and stuff. And so if you look at the 1920 year-end numbers to the 2021, and I get it's not year-end, so we just picked a date, so you got to kind of bear with me, but from 1920 to 2021, that's 270 less kids, okay, through that, which, you know, again, ADMs, it's just a, it's a significant piece when you, when you go through that. So. Any questions on any of those graphs before I kind of hit the next part? That kind of gives a general overview, and I'll get into why that is. You know, we've talked a little bit about our open enrollments in and out. Now, again, the pandemic's kind of made things crazy, but up until that point in time, we've been very consistent in about 6%, okay, throughout, no matter where it was, the number of in and out, it's been very consistent through there. So up until the pandemic, we didn't see a big change in those other pieces. It really had to do with kind of just the number of kids in our community. It's dropped since we hit our high in, you know, 2013-2014. So what are our trends? So we have had a slow decline, okay, since 2015-16, especially in the elementary. Since the beginning of the pandemic, we've seen an enrollment loss of 400-plus ADMs. Now, again, that's not kids, right? That's the bits and pieces, that's your extended, that's all of those things that make up your average daily attendant. It's not just one-to-one, okay? But the key is, the 400 is what we get funded on, all right? So we've lost about 400 ADMs through that process. When it comes to staffing for this year, we're going to staff on about 180 less students. Now, that has to do with what we have in campus compared to what we had last year, and also taking into account that we're slowly losing kids, so we apply a formula to that to show what that would be. But that should right-size us, or at least right-size us to the point of where we believe our enrollment is, and we do that every year, okay? At this point in time, when we were growing, we were right-sizing and anticipating, and now we're on the back end of things.
Jason, just a quick question. When you say we're losing 400 ADMs, what's the dollar amount stuck to that?
Well, you can, rough, we use 7,000-ish, but that's ballpark, right? I mean, what is the general, it's closer to?
It's just not your gen ed. You got to take in all of your other considerations, so that's why we just ballpark it at 7,000.
Yeah. I mean, that just gives you a rough number to kind of, to figure out where you, you know, go with that. Now, this gets to a little bit what we're seeing in our community, right? So another thing, when you start to look at your enrollment, you start to get a little bit worried when your kindergarten's less than your graduating class, right? When that happens, again, you're going to get on that back end of things, of your elementary being lower and you're losing your multiplier. So in 2019-20, I'm sorry, 2019-2020, that was the first year, going all the way back to 2003-4, where our kindergarten class was less than our senior class. And we potentially might see that for a few years to come unless something changes with the number of kids that are coming into our community. Another thing to think about, our P5, so our P5s are just basically the kids that are eligible for kindergarten, okay? So we were at a high in 2013-14 of 640 kids in that group. For the 2021-22 school year, we were at 511, okay? So a pretty significant decrease, just in the kids that are in the community. For this coming year, it's up again a little bit, which is good, but it's still significantly lower than that 640. It's 537 for this next year. In general, we capture between 12 and, I'm sorry, it would be between 85 and 87% of those kids end up enrolling and starting with us and stuff. So that's kind of the general that we use. So it's, you know, when we look at it, as weird as it seems, even though we kind of feel like we have a growing community, our younger kiddo population isn't necessarily matching that right now. It's actually gone down a little bit, which is what we've seen in elementary and stuff. And again, who knows what's going to happen with the houses and all the things? They just keep going up, and we drive around, and they just keep going up and potentially can bring kids with that. But, you know, we were a little bit more aggressive with our enrollment projections the last couple of years. We kept them level. Again, when we talked about before, we're going to just, to be super safe, we're going to project being down 100 kids. Like I said, the new housing, how will that impact, you know, enrollment moving forward? It's really hard to kind of get a really good idea about who's moving into those houses, so I asked Jane to, okay, so Rigida, south of Farming, you know, south of the high school, we know there's, it's a, there's 61 houses in there. So we did a quick look at our transportation versus trans, how many of those have school-aged kids in them? 12 of those households. So not a high percentage of those households have school-aged kids in them right now. Now, they could have younger kids and some other things, but, you know, when we're just looking at that, we don't have a significant number of moving in. And to be honest with you, we don't have a really good ability to see, I mean, those 12 also, they might even been Farmington kids before, they just moved to a different place, but it gives us an idea of that. And then, again, I've mentioned this a couple of times, but just to be aware, the elementary kiddos are weighted at 1, and the secondary are 1.2. So as we see that secondary population decrease, that hits our bottom line a little bit more. What are our knowns? And again, we've shared this a few different times, but just to get it all on one page. So based on all of the information, we are projecting a deficit of approximately $4 million for the 2022-23 season. Mostly has to do with that ADM decline. The district is projecting approximately $2 million in federal funds after this school year, okay? That can be used during the school day. We're projecting to have about $4 million in our assigned fund balance that is dedicated to maintaining class size and bridging from levy to levy after this school year. And then some of the other big drivers that we're seeing right now is our Special Education Cross Subsidy, which is about 8.1 million, and that will go up next year. We already anticipate probably opening three additional center-based classrooms, and then I know that we're looking at another DAP teacher. We're actually looking at about nine additional FTE that we have to add in to support our special ed students. And so when we're talking about net million-dollar reduction, when we add those in, we got to find that on the back end of something. Our district EL Cross subsidy is about $500,000, and then our just average costs, and then the average increase in the per, you know, per people funding. You know, there's a lot of talk about, you know, will they give us another 2% or some of that stuff? The reality is, it'd be great if we got another 2%. It really isn't going to impact anything until they really start to go after the special education and the EL Cross subsidy, because those 2%, that 2% equates to about, what is it, about, 2% is about what?
2% is about?
Yeah, about $1 million. 2% is about $1 million. It gets eaten up pretty quick, especially when you look at the needs of our learners continue to increase that are receiving special education support. Then moving forward, so what do we, you know, what is our process? So as I mentioned before, we right-size to our current enrollment. We do that every year. Again, it just happens to be where our enrollment's declining. When we built the budget, we knew we had 2% from last year from the legislature. We believe we are going to get something. So we took an aggressive conservative approach, where we built it on 1% from that session. If we get 2%, we're just going to let that 2% fall to the bottom line and help next year. We are planning on using $3 million from the federal money and the assigned fund balance to offset that $4 million. So that puts us at a target net of $1 million in reductions. The board did approve realigning our initial staffing ratio, which is what in board policy. We're fortunate, since we passed that excess levy in 2015, that we've been able to use a staffing ratio that was one below that, and we felt this was time to realign back to what is in that policy. We're still working on around $200,000 in reductions. We know that if nothing changes, we're projecting, you know, four-plus million again in 2023-24, but if we use $3 million of the basically $6 million in federal and assigned fund balance, that leaves us $3 million to offset. Next year, we'd be looking at additional reductions, but that will help offset that. And then the big question is whether the legislature will do anything to buy down that Special Education Cross subsidy or, you know, with that $9.3 billion surplus. So that is, that is where we're at. Again, that, kind of everything reviewed and hopefully in a nutshell in one place. Went a little bit deeper with the enrollment, just to give a little bigger perspective on things. So happy to answer any questions.
Jason, I have a question. When you were talking about year-end enrollments and showed us that graph, do we, or do you have any statistics on families that homeschool? At what point do they transition to public schooling? Because I know some families only do maybe elementary, and then they?
It all, I mean, it all depends on, what we've seen is it all depends on the family, right? And we also start to see some shared time agreements too, when they get into, when our homeschool families get into the middle schools. So there's certain experiences that they'd like their learners to have, that's a little bit more difficult for them to provide, so we'll share time and do some different things like that. But it's really hard to gauge that because it's really family-dependent on what they feel is best to meet the needs of their learner. So there, we don't really have a great tipping point to that. We do know that there, you know, there are some, you know, private schools that are K8 in the area, and, you know, typically, we do see kids return from that. in the area, and, you know, typically, we do see kids return from that, from that experience. But again, that may not always be the case.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you for the data. It's nice to, we've talked about enrollment for so many times and trying to figure out the pinpoint of when people leave and why, but to see just that, that one chart was useful with, that you had with just the squares and the enrollments, because my assessment from that chart here was, yes, the pandemic played a role in our numbers, but if you're seeing that green moving over, I don't think it would have been as, it still would have happened, just maybe not as significantly. I think it would have still been coming the way we're seeing the numbers in the community. So I think that's telling to me, seeing that.
I mean, I've used the analogy talking to our team, right? It was a drip, right? You know, 30 kids, and I think we could have gotten through the next couple of years with a drip without being in the financial position that we're in with the money that was set aside from the 2015 voter-approved levy. I think that would have helped bridge a majority of it. But when you add the pandemic to this, and it adds on to it, it just, you know, made it exponentially bigger faster.
Appreciate the perspective and seeing the statewide numbers as well. Very telling, thank you.
Yeah, I just, you know, I just want to be, you know, again, we're, the hard part is, right, we're talking, it's not apples and oranges. I mean, it is a little bit, but when you're talking ADMs, it just looks a little bit different. We thought by putting this in, even though we're not funded specifically on this, this gives us, again, the idea. And back to the question that Board Member Simmons asked, you know, one of the reasons why did we look at, you know, having, you know, Cedar Hills go to Aiken Road, well, we can see, and you can see the effects of being landlocked, right? I mean, as that, those, as that, you know, community has gotten older, right? People have stayed there. They like living there, they stayed there, but there's no new opportunity for kids to come in, and I think they've seen that a little bit. And, you know, we're fortunate, where those, you know, two, Rigida and Cedar Hills are close enough where we can do that fairly easily. But, and then you look at Dodge again too, right? Dodge is, you know, it's not the same size building as Bachman, so Bachman can clearly handle more kids. But, you know, if we can keep those balanced, it's just easier for programming and things.
Any other questions? This may be too early, but I know about a month or maybe a little over a month ago, there's a survey going around, there was a survey done on online, Appetite for Online Learning Next Year. Is it, do you have results from that? Do you have a sense for where things are going to go?
They're still digging through them. I mean, high-level thinking, I think it's going to be hard to provide an elementary program based on the number of kids that we had and where they fall and stuff. Middle school is in the same boat. Chris is doing a little bit more digging, because it, when you have a schedule, you might be able to do something. I think it's, if you're asking me right now, I think it's going to be really hard to provide that based on the situation that we have without investing additional money. You know, I think if we weren't in the situation we are in, and you look at this slide, you're like, boy, if we could invest money, and it's probably good. And sometimes to get something up and running, you have to invest in it to get it up and running. I just think based on the initial feedback that we've gotten, I don't know if that investment would really be worthwhile. Now, the high school's a little bit different animal, right? I think at the high school, there's more flexibility in how that could look and what that could be, because it's more compartmentalized. So that's probably where, I know Chris and Dan Pickens are spending a little bit more time. It's very likely that there will be some online experiences at the high school. It may not be full-time. It might be full-time. It all depends on potentially what the learner's looking for and what classes they're taking. But I think it's going to be really hard unless the state comes in and takes care of cross subsidies and some of those other things where we can invest in that to be able to do that right now. But we're still working on that.
It just seemed in context, so I wanted to ask a few more.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good question. To me, again, when I first saw this, and you're like, well, look at the number of people that want that experience, right? How do you develop that? Well, you still need a, you know, kind of a certain number to get it started, and, you know, based on your elementary, they got to be in certain grades and things like that. And we just, I don't think we quite have that.
Yeah, it's a difficult deal, right? Venture capitalists can invest and lose money for decades. Just ask all the dot-coms, right? But this is different. All right, if there's not any other questions, I guess we can move on to everyone's favorite topic, COVID-19.
Let's go. I forgot my glasses today, so I'm having, I want to make sure I get the right one out. Tough day here. Okay, so thank you Chair Christensen, members of the board, members of the community. So this is our ISD 192 COVID-19 update. I think one of the things that we talked about with the executive committee, that this might be the last formal one, unless something changes or people in the community really like it, then they could do videos or something to provide the information.
I think you talked about doing it as part of your superintendent update, which...
Yeah, we could get it there. So just one last time, maybe, there we go, oh, there we go. So similar, our data, okay? So pulled the same thing that we've pulled the last three times, started with staff absences. And again, you know, you take a look at our staff absences, they're right in line where we would expect them to be a little bit higher coming back after a break, a little bit higher on a weekend, but nothing that we can't handle. And actually, when you look at, you know, when you start looking at threes and fours and sevens for unfilled, that's pretty darn good when we look at it. And again, I think a lot of it has to do, not only with our staff being in and, you know, not being impacted by COVID, but I think also just the willingness of people that have been substitutes for us willing to pick up jobs, that's much more readily if people are willing to do that. Our confirmed cases, again, you can kind of see where things are trending for this last week, again, really low. You know, high school, hasn't had a reported case in two weeks. Elementary and middle school, still really low. Nothing in our early childhood, and our staff, when you look at that, really hasn't been impacted much by it either through that. And then, our absences, so our absences are right in line where we think they would be. People's eyes might be drawn to FHS and say, well, that's 10%. Well, we're also hitting state tournament time. So when we pull this, and this was pulled for a Thursday, right? So we had, you know, kids making choices for that. The other thing too, when you start to look at this, we have to take into account, right? Our spring break is in two weeks, but families make the choice to go on spring break when it works best for them, and we support them, right? You can get cheap airline tickets, and you can go somewhere. Go ahead and do that, and that's one of the benefits of kind of our system. So, you know, we don't expect these to drop significantly over the next two weeks. They actually might go up a little bit just on what families are doing and things. But when we look at the codes and all the other parts that go into this, it fits right in where we feel we should be and not being impacted significantly by COVID or illness, which is good.
Yeah, I think that's the important thing to remember on some of these slides, is that this is total all-in, not just related to one specific virus or illness.
Yeah, this is just simply, Chris pulls, Chris does this for me, just looks at anybody who was absent for a half-day or more, regardless of code and stuff, so.
Awesome news.
Yes.
Very nice to see those zeros.
Any questions or comments from the board? Awesome. With that, can I get a resolution to accept reports in communications?
Make a motion to acknowledge receipt of reports on communications.
Second.
Motion by Simmons, second by Coletta. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Our next topic is some items for administrative action. Looks like it's a number of insurance-related issues, and Mary Ann Thomas will be leading us through all of them.
Terrific, thank you. Chair Christensen, members of the board, members of the community. I do have a number of insurance-related action items for your review tonight. The first is our dental insurance. We're asking you to renew our dental insurance with our current provider, Delta Dental. We've been with them for over a decade, and our rates have really just stayed the same. This is a self-funded plan that does very well. We did get a three-year rate guarantee for this, so we did have one other bid for dental insurance, but the single was slightly higher, the family premium was slightly lower, but it would have resulted in a lot of disruption for our employees to have to make that change. So we are recommending that we continue with Delta Dental at the same premiums that we've had in the past. There is a resolution before you. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the continuation of dental insurance with Delta Dental?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Simmons, second by Saucer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item is the vision insurance renewal.
Okay. Our vision insurance is a voluntary employee-paid benefit, so if those employees who want to participate and are eligible may choose to participate. We are recommending that we continue with our same insurance plan, insurance company. And we do have a four-year rate guarantee. The rate premiums increased pennies, and I literally mean pennies. And this would be no change in the providers, that sort of thing. So we do recommend that the board approve continuation of our vision insurance with our current provider, VSP.
Any questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the continuation of voluntary vision benefits policy offered through VSP effective July 1?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Coletta, second by Saucer. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item is approval of critical accident/illness insurance, illness and, accident and illness insurance renewal.
Perfect, thank you. So this is, again, another voluntary benefit for our employees. It doesn't have a huge participation, but we added it a few years back at the request of the teachers, although it is eligible for all of our employees who are eligible for insurance. And it has two components. One is the critical illness, so it pays a benefit if our members suffer from a particular illness that's defined in the policy, things like heart attack, cancers, MS, that sort of thing. Or, and/or, employees can choose just to participate in the accident portion of the policy, and that, again, pays a certain benefit depending on if you are injured, the employee is injured due to, let's say, they broke their leg, broke their arm, that sort of thing, then it pays a certain dollar amount based on what it is you're breaking. And we are recommending that we change to Lincoln effective July 1. The rates for critical illness were a little bit less expensive, but for, or I mean, for accident, were a little bit less expensive, but for critical illness, they were substantially less expensive. The new policy, though, doesn't have a wellness incentive, where if you had done some sort of a wellness check, maybe you had a cholesterol check, or diabetes check, or mammogram, something like that, you could get up to $100 back once a year. And so this new company does not have that, but it should more than compensate for that on the illness side, on the critical illness side, less so on the accident side. So we do recommend that we change our insurance provider to Lincoln effective July 1. And again, it's not a huge participation for our employees, but it's one that we want to keep for those who are interested in having this benefit.
Any questions or comments?
So Mary Ann, with this policy, even though the premiums are more affordable for employees, there's no decrease in coverage for them?
Correct. It's actually a little bit better coverage. Great, that's all. Thanks for asking.
No other questions or comments? Can I get a motion to approve critical illness and accident policy with Lincoln Financial Group for eligible employees who choose to participate with premiums paid by the employee through payroll deduction?
So moved.
Second.
You? Okay, so motion by Saucer. I was wondering if you heard it. Second by Simmons, thanks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is approval of health insurance premiums for '22 and '23.
Okay, for our health insurance, little bit different story. We are, as you likely recall, we are a self-funded health insurance, have been for about nine or 10 years, which means that we collect premiums that partially are paid by the school district, partially paid by employees. And those premiums are used to pay for the claims that people experience administration by preferred one to pay those claims, collect and to pay those claims, and also to pay for our stop-loss coverage, which our stop-loss is when an employee or a member of this plan has something substantial wrong with them, and their claims go up over $125,000. We basically buy insurance that pays those expenses over the $125,000. So our plan is only hit at 125, but that insurance pays for the amount over that. So we have a cap on the insurance, the stop-loss insurance of 12% going into next year, so it will go up 12%. The following year, it may get, we may get really whacked, quite frankly, because one of the, our claims experience is very high on this and has been for the last couple of years. Approximately 30% of our claims are due to those high claimants. So those people that are getting close to that $125,000. We've got anywhere from 20 to 30 members of the plan who account for 30% of all the claims. And that's what insurance is for. I mean, if you have something catastrophic happen to you and you need treatment, that's why we all have insurance to pool that. But it does really increase our claims. The other thing that was a bit unexpected for us and everybody else probably, is that over the last two years, since March of 2020, we've spent $1.4 million on COVID-related things that we really didn't anticipate. No one did. Whether that be testing, which was the large majority of that, vaccines, or treatment for those people that got COVID and had to be hospitalized. So that $1.4 million is money that's taken out of our reserves, and we have to pay those claims. Last year, for the '21, '22 school year, when we set the rates about this time last year, we actually probably didn't set them high enough, because in the last four months of the plan year, we spent almost $1 million higher than we anticipated. And so if we were able to do it over again, we probably would have set the premiums higher by a percent or two last year, but we didn't do that. We are conscious of that now, so that these next few months, if we are over what we expect, we want to make sure our premiums are high enough to cover that. So that being said, the insurance committee has, we have an insurance committee comprised of all employee groups, representative from all employee groups, and we go over the claims and the administration and so on. Anyway, long story short, due to those claims and the cost of the claims, the stop-loss insurance and the administration for the plan, we are recommending an overall across our three plans of 10.82% total premium increase. But we are recommending we differentiate that based on the plan that people are on. So Plan A and Plan B, as you may recall, are more traditional copay kind of plans, much more expensive to run. And Plan C is our high-deductible HSA-compatible plan. So we are recommending that Plan A be increased by 15%, Plan B by 15%, and Plan C by 10%. And that would give us, based on how many people are in each plan, an overall of almost 11%. We do have an open enrollment period, once we set the premiums, we will have an open enrollment period that takes place in May. People can make changes. We do some education for employees. But in order to anticipate what the claims are going to be and be able to pay them, we do recommend these rates. It's a combination primarily based on where our contributions are for district employees right now. Most of this is going to be absorbed by the employees themselves, some who have single coverage, and if they're on Plan C, it might be less, both the district and the employee, depending on what group you're in. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about this or our plan. Otherwise, there's a resolution before you.
I do have a couple of questions. So I remember years ago, when I first got on the board, we were pushing for everybody to go to Plan C. How close are we to making that happen, and what's holding that up?
So, yep, you're right, Board Member Carrero, we did. So what we, we can't just unilaterally force people to do that. We have to bargain over that. As a reduction in the number of plans you offer would be considered a change in the aggregate value of the plans, and by Minnesota state law, public employers can't do that. And so each round of bargaining that we meet with our teachers, our... And so each round of bargaining that we meet with our teachers, our principals, our paraprofessionals, custodians, et cetera, we encourage them to move to Plan C. We have been successful, more successful in some groups than others. Some groups, we've simply gone to, you know, we've agreed in negotiations, we're going to eliminate Plan A and B completely. Everybody has to be on Plan C. And one of the ways that we do that is to offer them a contribution to the health savings account, to help pay for those claims. So some groups, we've done that. Some groups, we kind of transitioned saying, for all new employees, they have to go on Plan C, the high deductible plan, but the people who are sitting on the Plans A or B can stay there until they move. If they move, then they have to stay where they are at on Plan C. So for most of the groups, we've been successful doing that. The teacher bargaining group, we haven't been as successful. They are really reluctant to limit the number of plans for their members. And because with teachers, those who choose to stay on Plans A and B are really absorbing the costs themselves, the district isn't picking up the major, really, any of the additional, except in the case where we have two employees married to each other. In that case, the district does pick up some of that cost. But if it's simply a teacher who's on Plan A or Plan B, they are picking up the entire cost of this 15% increase. And it really doesn't financially benefit them, and we've tried to explain that to people. We've sat down with them. But for whatever reason, they feel like A or A and B might be better for them than C, a little bit more paperwork. They don't, maybe don't understand it. So they've been less interested in moving to Plan C, even for new hires. So I think all the other groups, we have at least got new hires start on Plan C. And then as you move to it, you can't go back.
So is it costing the district more to have those individuals on A and B then? And is C subsidizing than A and B?
To some degree, yes, yes. To some degree, that is true. Yep. Now, the other thing to think about is we wouldn't want to, it wouldn't be a good idea probably to just, even if the people agreed to get rid of A and B, just to dump them all on C right now. Because the premium probably isn't set high enough to absorb those people. It should probably be somewhere between what the premiums are now for A and B and what it is for C. C is significantly less. It probably needs to be a little higher to be able to pay the claims, but not as high as A and B currently are.
Are you suggesting that the high-cost claimants are in the A and B plans for the most part?
There is, there is some of that, yes. There is some. Not all of them. It's kind of what Mr. Berg said, each family's a little bit different, but there are a lot of the high class, hot, that's not right.
High-cost claims.
There you go, on A and B.
And do we have a percentage that we do put away for, for claims like this from a district standpoint for insurance?
A percentage?
So meaning we know it's going up 15%? Because I'll be honest, I'm surprised we didn't get this from the finance committee. Because I would have, I have a, would have a, I still have questions about that. Because from a finance committee standpoint, I would just say, okay, what are we planning for next year? And how much do we contribute from a district? Are we putting money away in what percentage? I mean, we're way off, is my assumption right now.
Sure. Yeah, I kind of misunderstood the question. So when we just look at claims and administration, what our increase should be, it should be about 8.8%. The, getting to the 10.8 is an extra 2%. That is basically a cushion to help build our reserves for when things are bad. And so, yeah, it's a 2% cushion that we are suggesting we build in. Now, if we have a horrible next four months, then that cushion may not be able to build like we expected it to be. But with COVID, you know, kind of on the downswing a little bit, not so much every, you know, there's home test kits. Everybody's got those. Maybe it won't be as bad the last four months now as it was last year. But yeah, we did build in a cushion of that 2%.
So we, since you made the comment, the following year, it seems it's going to go up even significantly more. So are we going to build actually more into that?
For 20, 23, 24 is what we'd be talking about. Where, what we anticipate that year, claims may not be wildly different than they are now, but we're going to get hit with that stop-loss because that's where the majority, well, 30% of our claims are coming from that stop-loss insurance. And we had a 12% cap going into 2023. That cap will be gone going into 23, 24. Pardon me?
Sorry. Why is the stop-loss cap, why is there a difference? Why does it expire?
When we negotiated this last year, when we negotiated with the current stop-loss carrier, we negotiated a cap of 12%.
And because the claims are so high, they would never offer that next, is that how that would go?
Right, they're probably not going to offer it. The second thing is Preferred One has been bought by United Healthcare, and they're for profit, so we're not exactly sure what might help and happen with that stop-loss insurance premium. It could go up anyway. So we anticipate that could increase instead of 12%. If we continue the trend we've been on, it could go up 40 or 50%.
And what share?
Not the premium, but.
Can you guess, like, I don't know if this is too detailed a question, but like what share of a premium is stop-loss coverage?
Jane, do you know that off the top of your head? I don't know, but we could get that to you.
I mean, it, we roughly spend round numbers, right? $9 million, and of that $9,500,000 is for stop-loss.
Okay, thanks, that's helpful.
And just to, just so, the board did, so the board did approve $500,000 that we put into a sign fund.
That was my next.
So we have, so in terms of socking money away, we do have $500,000 in an assigned fund balance. And we originally thought with what we were seeing with COVID or things like that, and so again, that, that is a pot that could be accessed next year if we needed to, to do something, or even, you know, this year. I'm not sure we would recommend this year, but, but yes, there is, so there is some socked away.
I guess, oh, no, go ahead.
Sorry. When you say that it could be accessed potentially, Jason, does that mean to help offset some of the increase in premiums for employees? Or is that to pay claims?
You could buy, I mean, the way I understand it, you can buy down the premium cost.
They kind of go hand in hand.
Yep. And to that point, I guess, what I would like to do is if we can, is to take this back to the finance committee because I would like, we have an unassigned balance, and I mentioned this to Jason. And to me, that's a rainy day fund that benefits all, everybody. It's not a specific group within the district. And you guys heard me talk significantly about the rainy day fund, which I personally, it needs to benefit everybody. And this is something I would love to consider from a board's standpoint of what we could do. But I would want to know the impact financially over the time, too, is if we take X amount of percentage out of, of, again, it's just, it's going to get us on the back end of this thing, which scares me, too.
Yeah, there was something in the notes. I think you're talking about the reserve. So there's the, there's the.
Unassigned balance.
Well, there's the, you had mentioned that there, in one of the, we were chatting earlier, um, before the meeting, and there was a, a fund, I don't know if it was, it wasn't like it was a fund, it was just a reserve.
It's, it's a reserve for the claims.
You aim for X, but we're at X minus.
It's supposed to be like 40.
35 to 40%. We, you, with a self-funded plan, you aim to have your reserves at the 35 to 40% of claims level. So that, a couple of reasons. One is kind of what Board Member Carrero's talking about. If your claims are really high, you could use those reserves to buy down the premium increase. And also, you need to have reserves to pay out the claims if the plan should ever cease.
Right.
You have to pay out those claims that lag three, four months. And so the reserve is for that. I assume Board Member Carrero's talking about the $500,000 that's in an assigned.
Well, I'm talking two things. I'm talking that and I'm talking the unassigned balance as well.
Oh, okay.
That we have, that there.
Talking about using the unassigned balance for either the reserve or the.
Depending how.
It's about 9.5, that sits about 9.5%.
And then, and then Mary Ann, with the, you mentioned with Preferred One being purchased by United Healthcare, which is a for-profit plan, have we made efforts to examine other administrators for our plan who maybe are not for profit, or to compare costs of switching administrators?
Nick, every other year's a, hit a year where we have to go out for RFPs, so we will do that next year for that. We did it last year, and we'll do it again next year for that. It really didn't have much impact this year, but we're thinking going into 23, 24, it might. And so we will, yes.
And have we ever looked at a tiered approach based on salary? I mean, I know you can attest to this, too. TR, Thomson Reuters, it's based on salary is what you pay for insurance. So obviously, the more you ache, the more you pay.
Well, you'd have to negotiate that with each union.
Well, I'm sorry. Correct, but then, you know, again, looking at the contributions, too, is negotiating. I just have a lot of questions that I would feel comfortable, as a finance committee being on, is sitting down with you guys and going through this a little bit more to see if we could make some adjustments to that with some of the unassigned balance. Or if we can look to a different approach going into the next negotiation with insurance companies, if we're going to look at that. Is there a tier-based approach we can do?
That's an interesting question. I've never heard that a tier-based premium is what you're talking about. I've never heard of that, but that doesn't mean anything.
Actually, I think, kind of, we were talking, Kyle was there years back, of employee groups. I mean, it made sense of the, you know, you break it down from X to say 40,000, and 40 to, you know, 80,000, and blah, blah, blah. And it's, it's, we have three options for our insurance, and based on what your salary is, is what you would pay.
Yeah, I understand.
And there's kind of a couple of things going in there, I think. You know, so I used to work at, I think we all three used to work at Thomson Reuters. I used to be in there, but my current employer also does this where you're, actually, I don't know if it's the premium itself or whether it's the employee, the employer contribution is less for those making over $100,000, for example, than, than those who are making less. So the less you make, the more the company is paying for your premium. So it's a way for, to achieve equity in what individuals are paying for health insurance. It's not something I see in these, in a lot of these collective bargaining agreements, somewhat ironically.
Maybe they don't know that exists.
But maybe they don't know it exists, correct.
Or if it's even possible. I'm sure we'd have to figure out if it's possible to offer before we could do our, bring it up during collective bargaining.
So I think that's maybe one thing you're talking about in terms of how the premium is sort of dependent on your salary.
Salary, correct.
I could see the district contribution being dependent on your salary. I'm, I'd be really surprised if we're going to be able to do the premium based on your salary. But I, like I said, I've never seen that. I don't know how that would work, but I could certainly see the district contribution. You could try to negotiate that with all of your bargaining units. You certainly could do so with your non-union. The thing with the non-union rate, well, you guys know what the premiums are. We don't have to talk about it here. But yeah, that's, that's a possibility.
My question is, if we do pause this for later discussion, go back to the finance committee and come back, is there time to do so?
It is really tight. So with you approving premiums tonight, we would be having our open enrollment period the first couple of weeks in May, in order to be effective July 1. We probably could push things back a week or two, but that's going to mean open enrollment could be late May, early June, when teachers are not even here, or staff are not even here, in order for us to have. I don't even know how that would work because some of our employee groups pay ahead of time. Like our paraprofessionals are paying in June for July coverage. So I would suggest, I don't, I, could we make it work? We can always make anything work within, you know, if it was at the next board meeting, we approved something, we might just have to have a really short open enrollment period, maybe not two weeks, maybe it's only a week, and push it back a week.
Because personally, I'm liking some of these creative solutions here because the increases don't, I mean, everyone's insurance was going up right now, but it was all something that we couldn't prevent, and it didn't always come in. And so talking about that rainy day fund and what we can do with that, I think it's creative to look how we, how we could possibly help out a little bit. I wouldn't say all of it, but help out a little bit. Yeah, I think that's, if there's a way that we can work on that creative solution, I think it'd be advantageous to do so.
Especially since, I mean, the 1.4 million for the COVID part, I mean, I just, I mean, again, that's an uncontrollable. We had nothing to do with that, nor did anybody. And if we can help, to your point, Melissa, in any way possible, I would just like to kind of reevaluate that.
Well, and I know if the finance committee is able to meet, you know, relatively quickly, we typically only have this one meeting in March due to spring break and other commitments. But I'd be happy to have a special meeting in order to help keep things moving forward if there are enough to have a quorum and not wait a full month before our next board meeting to address this, so that we can.
Absolutely. I would say after, even tonight after the meeting, we'll get calendars, however you guys want to do it, and get it going. I mean, I think this is something that I'm very passionate about. Just because, again, if we, again, the rainy day fund is equitable. When we think about equitable, this is, this is the time to actually look at doing something for everybody because of the impact on that. So if we, I mean, I'm willing to meet this week. I know today's, well, today's only Monday. I'm thinking today's Wednesday.
Yeah, we couldn't wait until the meeting in April.
No, I'd like to be sooner than later. So maybe afterwards, we can get together and figure that out. If everybody's okay. Do we have to make a motion?
We'd have to have a motion to table and move this to, I believe we'd have to have a motion to table the, the premium increase to move it to the finance committee.
I will make that motion then.
Second.
Motion by Carrero, second by Saucer, to table the, the approval of the price increase or the premium increase so that it can be reviewed and discussed in more detail with the finance committee. Any discussion on the motion? I'm trying to make sure I follow all the rules here. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The motion passes. We will reconvene or take a look at options for how we can address that more creatively. That's a great idea, Steve.
And thank you, Mary Ann, for all your hard work on this, and it was nice to see the other premiums didn't go up yet.
So that brings us towards the end of our meeting. So the last item on the agenda is board remarks. And I will start with the student board members. Kennedy, do you want to lead us off?
I actually have something this time. I'd like to thank all the students and staff for being so flexible and respectful when there's sort of term schedule changes. Like I know we had a schedule change during lunchtime last week at the high school, so I want to thank everyone for that and all of you guys for having me here tonight.
Thanks. Michael?
I also have something. I forgot to mention it. I had it written down, but I just slipped my mind. Track and field and also some other spring sports started today and this week, so good luck to them. That's really it.
Well, they get a good week to start sports, especially if they're running outside.
It's going to be nice outside. Jacqueline?
I don't have much. Just congratulations to all the athletes that did well, are making it to state or section championships and all those things. And I do hope that people turn out and support everyone. We usually do. So that's all I got tonight.
Anna?
I want to say thank you to all of the teachers who got through conferences the last couple of weeks. I really enjoyed being able to be spending more time in my kiddo's classroom, and I know that it's a long two weeks. Those 20 minutes tend to stretch into 30 and 40, and the teachers are so gracious to spend as much time as you need talking about your kiddo. So thank you for that, and thanks to Jason for continuing to advocate for all of the, the bills that are moving through the legislature. Just having some experience in advocacy to policymakers have so many things on their plates and without the stories of people who are doing the work every day to make it real for them and make it understandable in a way that they can apply decision-making, I think is just so important. So thanks for continuing to prioritize that for our community and all kids throughout the state. I think it's really cool.
Thank you. Melissa?
All right, I got to get out of here really quick for the band concert, so I'm going to delay a lot of the congratulations I had on my list. But I have some important information I need to share. My family will be moving out of state in May, so I will only have a couple of board meetings left. And I don't want to get emotional, and I already am. But I just want to let everyone know that that's our plans, and I will fulfill my term as long as I'm here and grateful for the experience I've had. And I've got to run because I don't want to miss my daughter play in a couple of minutes. So not just to share that and leave, but I do need to go.
Thanks, Melissa. Sorry if I didn't want to give you more time.
That's okay. I would rather not be crying on my way out.
Rebecca?
Yes. Kennedy, did you say it was the swim and dive team that had the 3.81 GPA? That's amazing. How many kids are on that team?
Russell and Hocky had that, too.
Oh, really? Congratulations to those athletes that.
I'll have to get, I'll have to, sorry to interrupt, I'll have to touch base with Keith in the high school to get, because I know some of the fall teams, too. There's been a lot of teams above 3.7.
That's incredible. Congratulations to all those kids for getting those amazing grades up there and attending practice and games and all the other responsibilities they have. My ears perked up when you said that. That is incredible. So thank you for sharing that. Robotics team, it was a fun weekend up in Duluth with our kids on the team. We kind of look at it as a newer team because of the COVID for a couple of years. The younger kids coming into robotics learn from the older kids, and without having the robotics in motion during COVID, the younger kids didn't get as much knowledge from the seniors and juniors that ultimately graduated and left. So we're considerably a new team. However, I am. I am so impressed with these kids. You know, they have two months to build this robot, and they work, they work till they can't see anymore. I mean, these kids are at school for their, during the day for their classes. And then sometimes, you know, two, three nights a week, they're at school until 8:30 at night, plus all day on Saturday for two weeks. Plus, they have to keep their grades up, or they don't get to go to competition. So these kids worked their hearts out. And we went to Duluth. And for some unforeseen technical and mechanical issues, they had a challenge, the beginning part. These kids did not give up. And they, you know, as soon as their round was over, they went right back to the pit. And they were working and working and working to solve issues, whether it's mechanical. And they came out with smiles on their faces and happy to perform. You know, one of the sensors went for the ball shooting. So as soon as the robot entwook a ball, it was just shooting them everywhere. You know, so that was kind of like, what? But you know, unforeseen circumstances, you don't know that's going to happen. But once again, the kids had smiles on their faces. They laughed. By the end of the day, we were, you know, rock solid. That robot was, I'm so impressed with what they did. And not only did they have great attitudes, and not only the great attitudes, great sportsmanship. I mean, they were congratulating other teams. And Sunday morning, they had to sit and listen to, you know, teams getting picked that following day. We were not picked because of all the issues that we had the following day. But those kids sat there and clapped for every team that was chosen with smiles on their faces. And I'm so impressed with our school. I'm impressed with the coach. I can never say Spencer's last name. Evan.
Elderbach.
Elderbach?
Elderbach.
Elvabach.
Mr. Spencer. Just impressed with how he has the team running. And we did end up getting a judges award for the Go Baby Go program that they have. And this was something that they didn't really know they were going to get. But due to that program, the judges look at the communities for all the teams that are there. And they were very impressed with what the kids are doing for the Go Baby Go. So they got a, a nice reward there from that. That was a huge recognition. So congratulations to the team. They're, they're, they didn't make it to state, but we still have another competition. And we can still get into Worlds. You know, I'm always hopeful, I'll, I'll be optimistic until the very last day. But there is still that opportunity. So congratulations to those kids just for their great, you know, sportsmanship. And they were there on Sunday, watching the teams battle it out when they weren't chosen. They stayed till the end and rooted them on, which says a lot, because a lot of teams left. So.
Awesome. Well, thank you. Steve?
Again, the good news story, Superintendent Berg and our student school board members, I really appreciate the news you guys bring. I look forward to that all the time. I have nothing to cover on that. But I do want to say to Jason and Mary Ann, thanks for presenting tonight. You guys always bring detailed information to it, to these meetings. And the other thing I want to bring up, I'll send to Kyle this week, is, you know, 5:30 start for a meeting is kind of nice. I don't know if that's something we would reconsider again. But again, I'm going to bring that up to the, the call to items on that. It's kind of nice getting in here early and getting out early. So other than that, just want to thank all the staff, all the hard work they do throughout the school district.
Thank you. So I'll, I'll keep it short as I can. Yeah, no, I was pretty excited about the boys' basketball team. My, my kid referees and also plays, I've got kids playing basketball. So it's just been fun. Actually, this whole year right now has been just great fun watching. Well, so my oldest is in high school. So I care a lot more about what's going on at the high school, a lot more than I maybe did before then. And also, being on the school board, I have to, right, too. And, and, and it's just really exciting to see the energy in the community around all this stuff. The robotics team always gets good recognition. I think drama, debate, everyone else, it's been pretty exciting. And I always like to hear you guys' updates, too. It's, it's cool. You mentioned the science fair earlier. I judged last year. I got to judge again this year. That's always just super fun. As a, as a, as a geeky kid, Montevideo, Minnesota, I was also a science fair participant and, and remember going to the, actually, the Southern Regional Elementary Science Fair. And I think it was in Mankato back then. It's still there now, really kind of some, some great tradition. So it's been a lot of fun. And on the last note, Melissa, before she had to take off, announced she's going to be leaving the board, I just want to recognize, I wish you, I wish I would have started on the other side and maybe had a little bit more time. But she's been on this board, I think this would be her 12th year. I've known Melissa since, since we started, actually in school, I think, when, actually, a couple of our kids were in preschool together. And so she's been a close family friend and just a, a good mentor and extremely active leader in this community. And so I think that, I just, I'd be remiss not to recognize that, what she just announced tonight for the, for the board. And thank her for her incredible service. And looking forward to her, you know, final couple of meetings here before her family takes a really big step. That's, that's how we'll close. So with that, if I can get a motion to end the meeting.
I'll make a motion during, during the meeting at 6:55 PM?
Second.
Motion by Carrero, second by Simmons. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thus ends the meeting. Enjoy the evening. And anyone's going off to the jubilee. Drive safe.